Are we ready?
Yep.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I apologize for the delay. We had a little technical difficulty over here. I would like to, on behalf of Mayor Pro Tem, my fellow commissioners, Manager Madrid, Renee Canton, our City Clerk, I'd like to welcome you all to our morning business meeting of April 24, 2019. It is now 9:06. Madam, I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Here.
Honorable Ralph Fesler?
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Here.
Honorable George Cigetti?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is silent meditation. Would you please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 3, Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item this morning is Item Number 4, the approval of the agenda. Before we approve the agenda this morning, I would like to move Item E, 1, 2, 3, and 4 presentations above public comments. And that's all I have.
Here, we'll hit some move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, moving Item E 1 through 4 above public comments. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item E 1, Proclamation, naming Saturday, May 4, 2019, as Miss Fiesta Day. Could I ask the Miss Fiesta Court to come forward, please? I think that is Trinity Shipley, Haley Armijo, and Francis, I mean, not Francis, but Mackenzie Luna. You wanted to be Miss Fiesta once. At this time, I am going to read the proclamation. It says, "Proclamation, City of Truth or Consequences. Whereas on April 20, 2019, the Miss Fiesta Pageant was held at the Civic Center in Truth or Consequences with seven contestants; and whereas, the conclusion of the pageant, Trinity Shipley was named Miss Fiesta; and whereas, for over 67 years, the pageant was run by the Hot Springs Women's Club; and in 2017, it was taken over by the Rotary Club of Truth or Consequences; and has awarded many scholarships to contestants; and whereas, this young woman will represent Truth or Consequences in Sierra County at many events and occasions throughout her reign, giving generously of her time to promote Truth or Consequences and Sierra County. Whereas Miss Shipley has brought acknowledgement and proclam-- I can't see that.
June and borrow my glasses.
--inception to herself and her family with this achievement and is a source of enormous pride to the City of Truth or Consequences and Sierra County, just every other Miss Fiesta, just as every other Miss Fiesta has done. Now, therefore, I, Sandra Whitehead, Mayor of the City of Truth or Consequences, New Mexico, do hereby declare the first day of Fiesta on Saturday, May 4, 2019, as Miss Fiesta Trinity Shipley Day in the City of Truth or Consequences, and encourage area citizens to applaud all of these young women contestants for their accomplishments and enjoy another Fiesta weekend. Signed by Sandra Whitehead, Mayor, Renee Canton, our City Clerk. Congratulations." I also have two certificates of appreciation here, one for Haley Armijo and one for Mackenzie Luna. I'll read those proclam-- or those appreciations with our sincere appreciation and recognition to the-- of your accomplishment in the 2019 Miss Fiesta Pageant and earning the prestige title of second runner-up for Miss Haley Armijo and for first runner-up and Miss Congeniality for Mackenzie Luna. We commend you and wish you every success in your future endeavors dated this 24th day of April, 2019, signed by myself, Sandra Whitehead, Mayor, our City Manager, Morris Madrid, and our City Clerk, Renee Canton. And I will present these to you, and then I would like to have them back so I can sign them. Do we like a picture with all of them over there in front of us? Can I ask you girls to get over there? Let's get it all over here.
They're shorter than the basketball.
Well, come on, yeah. Come on around. Okay, the second item on our agenda this morning is Item E 2, Proclamation, naming me as Poppy Month for American Legion Auxiliary.
Madam Mayor, I don't see the auxiliary. I confirmed yesterday and it was supposed to be here.
Okay. And I don't have a proclamation, so.
But we got poppies.
Oh, we got poppies?
Yes.
We got poppies.
We're good.
All right.
We could postpone it.
We'll postpone that till a later time. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item E 3, Prescribed Fire and Wildfire for the upcoming 2019 Fire Season, Anthony James from the U.S. Forest Service.
My name is Anthony James. This year, we're passing maps out right now. We have a large-scale map there. We're looking at, we've been roughly 9,400 acres of crime fire in the East Area. We know that that smoke is going to impact the [inaudible] and [inaudible]. We just want to let people be aware of what's planned and where it's going to happen and the reason that we're doing this. So, up above, if you look at the map, we need 50 and 17. There is 280 people, one that supplies a castle. The castle [inaudible] by the castle allows this small [inaudible]. That mine gets impacted by anything from May through September, they can't [inaudible]. So, just down all the [inaudible]. So, we want to do treatment of the crime fires through there, and we need a 9, 10, 11, and 12. Half of unit 9, we have 40, 51, you rode 10 and 11, and they were treated before. The rest of unit 9 has not been treated, we have 12 numbers. By treating that stuff south, prevent that harsh catastrophic wildfire that we saw during the [inaudible] silver fire, reducing those fuels, raising that ladder, so we have lower intensity ground fire. And that's our goal, by treating this whole 75,000 acre area with color [inaudible]. And then help preserve that KB line, that supplies resources, so many other people. So, what we'll be looking at is, you know, we usually have a supply of wood, either 11, 10, 9, 12. We have these smaller blocks to create windows of opportunity. We're not trying to put up 10,000, 9,000 acres at one time. We could be 2,000, send people home, make sure we're in a good dry condition, but we don't have the high predicted winds. That's what we're looking for. But we want to have that transparency, we want to learn about the town, city council. Hey, this is what we're going to be doing with [inaudible]. So that when we get concerned, if you wouldn't say, hey, why is it smoking? You can have that alignment happen with all of the [inaudible]. So, that's kind of the big overview. This year, you've already seen that [inaudible]. Which is why you must have to have more managed fires. We're going to protect the fire, prescribed fire, and wildfire. So, we're going to manage all wildfire, some to be suppressed, some will be, that's just putting them out completely, some to be managed for resource benefit, to be the same thing with the [inaudible]. Putting the natural setting from a lightness [inaudible]. So, our goal is to really get you guys, the city council, on alignment with us, whether there's smoking there, we don't concern, or we have a point of contact. You also have other treatments going on for the national forests, we have [inaudible]. The 401, the 18, and the big other event that we have planned, November 14, at 16:00 in the [inaudible] with the national [inaudible]. We'll be going through [inaudible]. So, the Forest Service wants to work with the mayor and the city council to pass those over to the [inaudible]. Any other questions about crime fires? Got a lot of noise this year, [inaudible] on this [inaudible] through the summer. So, we're trying to do a lot more of smaller fires. Not saying that we don't have a possibility of a dry area, or [inaudible], but you want to manage them, so we don't have that [inaudible].
Thank you. We have any questions, Mr. James? Thank you, Mr. James. Our next presentation this morning is E 4, Presentation Related to Economic Development Through Tourism and Truth or Consequences, our former mayor, Steve Green.
Sandra Whitehead.
Thank you.
Your program, Mark, your commissioners, and Manager Madrid, thank you for giving the opportunity to share with us. After living in the city that Paula and I call home the last 19 years, it appears to me that we still haven't decided on who we are, what we want to be as a community, and what our place in the universe is. We put our hopes on others' dreams and not our own example. The Shutter Factory, York and Griffin, the Geo Dome, Hot Springs Development, Topper Flat Mine, [inaudible] due long [inaudible] and Spaceport America and its tenants are dealing with deep technology that has suffered some setbacks due to human error, but are moving forward and getting closer. Being an older community, average age 55-plus while the stage 36 means to me, when living on a fixed income, there is not a lot of disposable income for non-essentials, and many got hurt during the financial meltdown of '07 and '08. Therefore, since there is no GRT collecting on store bought food, prescription drugs, housing, storage units, we need to find a way to increase our GRT, thereby relying less on the transfer of our elected department's wealth to the general fund to help run the city and give our citizens the resources and services of quality life, Ivy swimming pool, golf course, law fields, recreational space, sound infrastructure that they deserve. Presently, with no large numbers of skilled workers, we are being passed over by industry because we cannot fulfill their job requirements. It seems that we were always waiting to have something fall in our laps and never going out in time to help ourselves and make something happen. Thankfully, that has started to change with the passing of our own Local Economic Development Act and the active activity of Bay Street Truth or Consequences, Dr. Neil Trail, Seating Byways, and other organizations. So, what will be the biggest, and what will have the biggest impact on the most number of citizens and businesses? I believe that economic driver is tourism. We have to leave several assets that give us a following tourist destination. If we're successful, we need buying of the whole community. The Silk Center, in the early 2000s, we realized that we didn't have the rooms and the gym we could compete with Albuquerque and Las Cruces for conventions, but maybe we could dance, deming, Silver City, Socorro, and Ria Doso by the small conferences and meetings. Our building wasn't a convention center, it didn't have active breakout rooms, proper electronics, media capability, and room providers, but if we gave the building free of charge to governmental entities and other organizations, maybe we could compete and then realize dollars spent in our community for lodging, food, soaps, gas, and shopping. It is up to us to maximize opportunities that come our way or that we create, and we don't do a very good job of that. Either a person or an entity should be responsible for making that happen and be held accountable for measurable outcomes and be rewarded accordingly. Tourism creates GRT, jobs, and showcases our community to help build back the population that we lost. We cannot continue to rely on spikes in our GRT through major construction jobs. It's great when it happens, but when we need, what we need is a steady climb upward on the GRT chart helped by a sound tourism initiative. In tourism, it is the person and what they represent. Example, Spaceport America Business Center. I asked the tour provider to ask the following question of his tour customers over the past four weeks. Question, did you or will you be staying overnight in Truth or Consequences? 62 people stayed overnight. 32 of 62 were removed from Albuquerque. I don't think it is unreasonable to assume that they also spent money in our shops and restaurants and bars and gas stations and [inaudible]. Just this past week, we had visitors because of the Spaceport Visitor Center, and I believe located where it belongs, in the heart of our downtown, on 416, two from Sioux Falls, South Dakota, four from [inaudible], Washington, 417, none, 418, nine from Juarez, four from Texas, 419, five from Germany, three from Albuquerque. If we didn't have the Spaceport Visitor Center, they would not have come into our community and spent money. The tour provider has shown that they want to be in part of our community and have opened up the facility for years for old-fashioned Christmas, the Hot Springs Festival, the Film Festival, for example. There are new banners on one porch, there are six new folders on the walls, or six new exhibits that will be coming into the visitor's center shortly. If we pulled the plug or moved the visitor's center now, this pushed to the finish line, what message does that send? And we will be the last to stop of the state. I know that bad things can happen, but since our citizens voted to invest in the project with our own dollars, let's make sure we continue to see our difference. Citizens did sue Bell Johnson for recreational purposes as well as concerts. There were 40 before he made the change for these activities to take place in a new location. We have heard that thousands use the facility to make people play shuffleboard, [inaudible] [inaudible] and [inaudible] and [inaudible] dancing two times a week or even five. Then, yes, you could say that 40 citizens used it many times, even thousands of times. The relocation was not, the relocation was not so exciting, but with the overall best interest of the community in mind. Since I was much, much younger, I was short for my age and tiny to be timed myself, touching. Therefore, it becomes no surprise to anyone that my favorite fable was the tortoise and the hare. We all thought that Spaceport would be the hare, and as it turned out, it is the tortoise. But I ask you to remember that. This is not the time to stop seeing the tortoise. We have been through the storm, and we heard Spaceport America and through the efforts of Spaceport America have received GRT benefits to our community that most of those [inaudible]. We want you to have a ground level. This is not the time to press the stop or pause button or bear. We have been leading the Spaceport and Virgin Galactic staff to work with them to ensure not a part from the first launch, but have it both smoothly for them and for us. A person from Virgin Galactic who delivered the relocation packages too is a [inaudible] resident and a Hot Springs High School graduate and a strong advocate for our community as well as others and important musicians to give back companies. We are on their radar screen, and some of their staff have brought homes in our community already. Now is the time to show Spaceport America, Virgin Galactic, and other Spaceport tenants that we are and will always be a welcoming and friendly community and fully support their efforts. If in real estate, it's location, 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 then for Spaceport, it's location and timing, timing, timing. And now is not the time to stop and ignore our support. We are so close. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and give you some advice.
Thank you, former mayor Green. Before you leave the podium, though, I do have a small presentation that I need to give to you. On behalf of the City Commission, myself as Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, my fellow commissioners, and Manager Madrid, I would like to present you with this plaque with a gavel of your own. Do not hit Paula over the head with it. I will read this. It says, "Presented to Stephen Green in appreciation for your service and dedication as mayor from March 8, 2016, to December 31, 2018, Mayor Pro Tem, March 11, 2014, through March 17, 2016, and Commissioner from March 11, 2008, to March 10, 2014." We wanted, we had this on the agenda back in March, and you did not, it did not show up, so we are now presenting it to you, and it gives me great honor to do that. Thank you for your service to our community.
Congratulations, Madam. I'm very glad.
I'm sorry. Disgrace.
And that's all, that's all the public, that's all the comments we have on your floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Good luck, all of you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item C, Comments from the Public. We ask that you remember our three-minute rule. If you have any items that need to be given to the commissioners, please place them in the little black box next to the podium. Please state your name and address, and Adon, you're on.
Adon Trahiel. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. 506 West Third Street. Wanted to comment a little bit about what Steve was saying about making the Civic Center a place for meetings for government entities and others. I think it's a great idea. Unfortunately, the city's got to look at your policies. In 2014, I can state equivocally that you all had about seven government entities use the Civic Center, and in every instance, you waived the fee. You can't do that. The federal government has money. Make them pay for the use of your facilities. You know, I just think it's a really good idea, but our policies are wrong. You're not going to earn money if you can't, if you keep waiving fees for government entities. Something else about Steve, we're having a cleanup day on the 27th, and Steve, in past years, was in the forefront of having people go out and volunteer cleaning the streets by pick and shovel and a weed eater or whatnot, and a group would do it before the Fiesta. I think we need to return to that. It's probably too late now, but we've got, we should be doing that. And Cleanup Day is one day, on the 27th. That, I've been in line, I've had to stand in line for an hour and a half to try to get my trash dumped. You really need to give people tickets, and one day that that ticket would allow them that whatever day of the month that they choose, they can take their trash, but it's too much of a load on one day to have all this happen. So, it's vouchers for every person for one day they can take their trash. Wanted to go back on the presentation I made a couple of weeks ago. I wish I would have had the 15 minutes that you allowed Steve to have, and I really think 10 minutes is too little to have a presentation. So, please, can you also report back on those committees that are inactive? Someone, one of your commissions, Sandy, you mentioned the one of the committees would be talked about, but what about the other four that are inactive? There's going to be a golf tournament on the 27th. It's the first one in three years, and God's sort of favored us by having the rain, so it'll be pretty green, I bet. And volunteers are needed on Friday to go help clean the golf course. Bart at the golf course should take that. I like the idea of presentations being before public comment. It's a good thing to be able to comment on that. I think everyone benefits. Tourism, tourism needs a benefit, to focus on making things better for people in this city. I can't say that enough. We've got to make the town nice for people who live here. Don't focus so much on trying to bring people in. Focus on little incremental improvements to make life here in our community a nice thing to do. Take care.
Thank you.
Diane Lombardo, 704 Silver Street, TRC. And one thing about Steve that I would like to say, when Deb and I first started setting up at the farmer's market, Steve, then a commissioner, came and introduced himself, and he has been a friend of Kat since then, and we thank him for that immensely. What I want to say is, there are a couple of things that happened the past couple of weeks. Chief Aragon let me know that the foster program is getting off to a good start, and it is official, they're going to get everything in place. I'm mentioning this, there are, the other thing that I heard was Macia Valley Shelter has become no kill. For those of you who don't know what no kill is, that means they have a 90% live release rate of the animals that come in there. Now, what's good about that is, number one, of course, you don't have to kill animals. The other thing is that it's better for taxpayers, because if you can control the animals to the point where you don't have overcrowding and everything else and have to kill animals, it's cheaper for the taxpayers. A couple of years ago, Macia was grossly mismanaged. They had a huge, huge overcrowding problem. The manager was fired, and here it is a couple of years later, and they are now no kill. There are a couple of stages that you need to go through no kill. One is, of course, a foster program, which we are starting here, so that's kudos to the animal shelter people. The other is, of course, a strong spay-neuter program, which we have probably not as strong as we would like, but as strong as we can manage in a companion animal action team. Since Deb and I and Meiji, Powi-- Since Deb and I and Meiji, Poi, and Robin Brodsky and Letha Kradowski started Cat seven years ago, we have done over, well over a thousand animals. And if you don't think that makes a big difference, it does. And the subrecipient grant that we have gotten from you guys is always, is a big help. But I do want to have a shout out to the animal shelter people and let them know Macia Valley did it. We don't quite have the resources, we're not quite that rich, but we'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Linda Di Marino, and I'm here on behalf of Main Street Truth or Consequences. I'm just wanting to let you know that we are kicking off our customer service training program. This was through a grant with the USDA that we got, and it's going to begin on this Friday. So, it's a two-day training course. I may have mentioned this in the past. Day one is the basics of customer service, and day two is asset awareness. Those people completing both of those days will get a tour of the Spaceport and become certified local ambassadors. We're encouraging anybody who works with the public to take this course, because it's a benefit to not only the local people who come into contact with our customer service people, but also our tourists. And the benefit really with tourists is if we have a bunch of people who are good at customer service and who know about the assets, the tourists who visit here are going to stay longer, because they're going to find out about things that they might want to do. And when they stay longer, they're going to spend more money, and that money then goes, gets GRT, and that goes into the city coffers, and that's how tourism benefits the locals. So, sometimes people overlook that, but if we just trade around our same dollar, we don't get very far. So, anyway, we invite everyone out that deals with the public to our customer service training class, and you can find more about that on our Facebook page, or you can call me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Marta. I'm the Sierra County Extension Agent, and I was wondering if the commission would possibly entertain the idea of the Sierra County Extension Office moving a shed that we currently own and is located at the Sierra County Fairgrounds over to the City Arena. I utilize the City Arena a lot for youth activities, horse riding clinics, the Hot Springs Rodeo Association, the Gym Connas, and we are always having to store our barrels, our poles, all the items that we use for all the activities at the City Arena. And I, I was told that a year or two ago, there was the possibility that maybe they were going to purchase a shed to place at the City Arena to use for such a, such a thing. But in the meantime, the Sierra County Extension Office does own a shed, like I said, that's located at the fairgrounds, but isn't currently being used for anything. It's like a 10 by eight-foot tough shed type of a shed. And if we could possibly just pick that shed up, move it to the City Arena, and have it there to be able to use for storage, basically, for things that we would need at the arena.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. And I'm actually a resident of Williamsburg, but I just wanted to address a couple of things that Diane said. We haven't signed for some specific parts of our grant. We are now working towards moving the shelter, and the majority, the problem has been that animals are supposed to be spayed and neutered before they do, they do use up the shelter. It's not possible this year. But with the fact that we are now running a clinic every week thanks to Amy Sars, doing 25 to 28 animals, almost every animal that is going out of that shelter can be neutered or spayed within thirty days. And in priority, the Sierra County Animal Rescue is now sponsoring some of those animals, as well as some of us as individuals. So, for people, there's only few questions about where the shelter is targeted. Twenty-five dollars is given back when they spay it or neuter it, but if they get a certificate from SARS, the spay-neuter is free. Our charge maximizes, if you are low income, at fifty dollars for spaying a female dog. Go anywhere, it's a tiny price that costs a decade. It's not. We subsidize our spay-neuters by about 30% of the total cost, so we can depend on our grants and our donations to cover that other 30% that is not paid by individuals. Cats are thirty dollars across the board, boy, boy or girl, they all weigh down. Male dogs are forty dollars. But no matter how big they are, we've done 130 pound victims, they're still only forty dollars a year. Thank you for your time. Thank you to Chief Aragon for working with us, coming down, seeing what we're doing, and also thank you to the shelter for trying to make sure that the gay and Indian are done within thirty days, and that stops that turnaround. If I took the dog wrong, oh well, not red. And now we have a little better puppy story to the shelter. We are all, thank you.
Thank you, Meiji.
... I have been saying to the director, we have the city highlight, and after visiting the shelter, we appreciate the commitment that we have to save the city for the past years, and supporting the city. We are very involved by great pools in the area, because the city realizes limited cuts, which we don't share, and limited in the mortgage tax, although I didn't apply for what we should, because I get paid some out of my pocket for some of our contributions. But we do provide this money other than from the city, and county mortgage taxes, nothing differently. So, this year, donation for a community seat, whatever, fundraiser, Rappel, past president artist along the July Trail, they are on display in a case in the rebuild room in the rebuild building. It's a beautiful case, just to be ready, if you could stop by. We have Friday morning for the afternoon. We'd like to see that case there. It dates to the, at least 1930s. My husband did, I passed it down there. So, we have a court paper, Amanda Parks, who has been deceased many years, Nanny Simon, who has been deceased many years, Atkins from Alice Fable, she has been deceased many years, post a wall hanging by our golf cart, C. He who has been deceased many years, Parry Besser, painting family, Will Hight, who has been deceased many years, Ursula Canobas, Bettina Severes, she lost her eyesight several years ago, and is now living in poverty after that, she's still in rehab. We have a sign numbered, Trent by Howard Moore, and it was the twoman on K O 18, Channel 7, for many, many, many years, and also in that past form, and it is a beautiful spread. We have two peppered friends, Kevin, Henry Hale, second, and he is now in the Gutten's home, and no longer, no longer. Our release, so they're just, we're, we eliminate two every step of that. Mary Miller, who has a beautiful face, Jimmy Schrader, you know, first from Paul, Kathy and, or any, little father we hold from...
Spectrum.
Spectrum, and then we have a nice, a lot of, a lot of oil, sunburn, and Delmas has had, which is, you know, passing okay, because Delmas is not paying even more. So, these are items that, most of which will be in the Friday then. These are five dollars each.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Saud Bakera, 107 Jade Loop, Penelope Butte. I'm the program director at the Club Teen Center here on Broadway. I'm here today because we did apply for the subrecipient grant, and when we submitted our application, there was a couple of documents that were missing. We're going through some administration, administrative changes throughout all of Apple Tree and the club, and so there was just a little miscommunication between the administration at Apple Tree and the club. I did, as soon as we received word of it, did go down to the city manager's office, and I did turn in the proper documentation, and I'm just here to ask you to reconsider our application. We're, you know, one of the only, well, we are the only teen center here in Truth or Consequences, and we've partnered with the city for many, many years, and we want to continue to provide services to, to, we provide, we do provide services to sixth grade through 12th grade. All our services are completely free to, to the teens, and we, you know, we want to continue to be able to provide services and, you know, work and partner with different organizations in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Marilyn Pope, Toronto Animal Springs Museum, and Fiesta Board today, too. First, I want to thank everybody in the community that participated in any way in the recycling contest at the museum. That was huge, and we had some really cool things. My favorite was the pineapple that some, some middle school student made, but there were a lot of nice things there. The middle school had 100 entries, which is really, I think, phenomenal. The high school had about 30 entries, and then we had an adult division, too. So, it was really a neat event. We had over 300 people there last Saturday. So, and we had, during Art Hop, too, want to mention that the museum has recently received a huge treasure from the Tulley family. They gave us a number of things from the Herald, and we're still trying to find a place. As you know, we're surrounded by rocks, so we can't add on, so we just keep kind of going up inside and get another ladder. If, we're going to have a grand opening, too, for our new vessel and arrowhead exhibit, which has been a long time in the making, but we pulled out some things that were stored, and we're working on that. As far as the Fiesta goes, I want to tell everybody that this is your chance. Those of you that complain about the parade just being politicians, we only have one politician this year, and so this is your chance to really shine and, and put something together. We have a nice parade so far, but we can certainly always use more. Those of you that have been here as long as two or three of us in the group, remember when the parade was absolutely huge, and you sat forever, waiting and waiting and waiting, and so on. Wyatt Earp will be there, Doc Holliday, Big Nose Kate, the Clantons, Billy the Kid. The museum will have a book signing, which ironically, with all these lawmakers, is sort of an odd thing, the way it turned out. The book is going to be the City Archer book that's been published recently by the Hillsborough Historical Society. So, it should be a fun time, but get your parade entry in and show those politicians what you can do. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment this morning?
Good morning. I'm Howard Kleinsider, and I'm on the Fiesta Golf Advisory Board, and we want to remind everybody that this year is the first tournament we've had in four years, and we are inviting the mayor and the, and the princes and the queen to be there at 8:30 on Saturday morning to have pictures taken, and then hopefully they can say and give out the awards after the tournament. We have 56 players. We're getting new golf carts. We're renting some golf carts, and the golf course is looking great, and we really thank the city manager and all of you commissioners for getting behind the golf course. This is our golf course, your golf course. With 56 players coming in, remind you that these people eat, drink, and party in T R C, and we need more support, and we need to get more people interested in playing golf. Golf is a fun thing. I'm 87 years old. I'm not a good golfer anymore, but I can go out there and hit the ball 50 yards rather than 150, but I can still do it. So, I encourage the city to really get behind the golf course, because it's our golf course, your golf course, and it helps to pay city improvements. It costs money to run a golf course, but it also brings in a lot of revenue. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment this morning? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is Item D, Response to Public Comment. Do we have any response to public comment this morning? And you all, I would like to thank everyone for their comments this morning, and if you have any concerns or questions, you're always welcome to call our city manager, Morris Madrid. He's always available in his office to discuss any issue that we can't resolve here. But thank you all. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item F, Consent Calendar. It consists of Item F1, City Commission Minutes, approval, March 27, 2019. F2, Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes, March 18, 2019. F3, Library Advisory Board Minutes, August 27, 2018. September 24, 2018, and January 28, 2019, and March 25, 2019. And F4, Subrecipient Third Quarter Reports. Do I have, is there anything that needs to be pulled and discussed separately, or do I have a motion that we accept all of these at one time?
Madam Mayor, I did get, send in some corrections on the city commission meetings, but with Angela being out of the office last week, it kind of got sidetracked, and they have been, they, okay, they are in there now, but it's...
They are in there and corrected.
Yes, yes, well, you got them all, okay.
Is there any, anything else? Do I have a motion to approve these four items as presented?
I'll make that motion. To accept the items on the consent calendar, including the city commission minutes, March 27, 2019, public utility advisory board minutes of March 18, 2019, the library advisory board minutes of August 27, 2018, September 24, 2018, and January 28, 2019, and March 25, 2019, and the subrecipient third quarter reports.
Then do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar as noted by Commissioner Zagetti. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item G, Ordinance, Resolutions, and Zoning. The first one is G1, Public Hearing, Discussion, Action, Public Hearing, and Final Adoption of Ordinance 701, Approving the Land Use Assumptions and Capital Improvements Plan, Final Report. Tracy Burnett, our grant projects coordinator and zoning official, along with John Appel, our city attorney, and John Montoya, multi-organist.
Mayor and Commissioners, before I start the presentation and background on this item, just as a preface to that, we did have some litigation that was related to this item that has been resolved, not evolved, but resolved, and we need to move forward with it anyway. The two, well, were connected, are not required to be, remain that way. Just, we need to move forward with this, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a call coming in? Thank you. Tracy, you're on.
Morning, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and Commissioners. So, this is for final adoption, public hearing and final adoption of the ordinance as it pertains to the land use...
And we need more support, and we need to get more people interested in playing golf. Golf is a fun thing. I'm 87 years old, I'm not a good golfer anymore, but I can go out there and hit the ball 50 yards rather than 150, but I can still do it. So I encourage the city to really get behind the golf course, because it's our golf course, your golf course, and it helps to pay city improvements. It costs money to run a golf course, but it also brings in a lot of revenue. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment this morning? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is item D, response to public comment. Do we have any response to public comments this morning? And you all, I would like to thank everyone for their comments this morning, and if you have any concerns or questions, you're always welcome to call our city manager, Morris Madrid. He's always available in his office to discuss any issue that we can't resolve here. But thank you all. The next item on our agenda this morning is item F, consent calendar. It consists of item F1, City Commission Minutes, approval, March 27, 2019. F2, Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes, March 18, 2019. F3, Library Advisory Board Minutes, August 27, 2018. September 24, 2018. And January 28, 2019. And March 25, 2019. And F4, Subrecipient Third Quarter Reports. Do I have, is there anything that needs to be pulled and discussed separately, or do I have a motion that we accept all of these at one time?
Madam Mayor, I did get, send in some corrections on the city commission meetings, but with Angela being out of the office last week, it kind of got sidetracked, and they have been, they, okay, they are in there now.
They are in there and corrected.
Yes, yes, well, you got them all, okay.
Is there any, anything else? Do I have a motion to approve these four items as presented?
I'll make that motion. To accept the items on the consent calendar, including the City Commission Minutes, March 27, 2019. Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes of March 18, 2019. The Library Advisory Board Minutes of August 27, 2018. September 24, 2018. And January 28, 2019. And March 25, 2019. And the Subrecipient Third Quarter Reports.
Then do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar as noted by Commissioner Zagetti. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item G, Ordinance Resolutions and Zoning. The first one is G1, Public Hearing Discussion Action, Public Hearing and Final Adoption of Ordinance 701, Approving the Land Use Assumptions and Capital Improvements Plan Final Report. Tracy Burnett, our Grant Projects Coordinator and Zoning Official, along with John Appel, our City Attorney, and John Montoya, Molsen Corbin.
Mayor and Commissioners, before we start the presentation and background on this item, just as a preface to that, we did have some litigation that was related to this item that has been resolved, not involved, but resolved. And we need to move forward with it anyway. The two, well, were connected, are not required to be, remain that way. Just, we need to move forward with this, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a call coming in? Thank you. Tracy, you're on.
Morning, Mayor, Mayor Protam and Commissioners. So this is for final adoption, public hearing and final adoption of the ordinance as it pertains to the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan and the, for the impact fee study, final report. And we have, as reported, we have John Appel, our City Attorney, who's reviewed this thoroughly, as well as Molsen Corbin, who's the one that did the plan. So if there's any questions or concerns?
Thank you. Manager Madrid.
I think, Mr. Appel, if you would give us a brief backdrop before we start the public hearing?
Mayor, Madam Mayor Protam, Commissioners, this is basically an action that is required so long as you have impact fees in place. Every five years, and frankly, we're a little bit overdue at this point, you do need to look at the land use assumptions and the capital improvements plan and determine whether they need to be amended, and on that basis, whether in fact the impact fees should be changed. The document, you have an ordinance before you which would adopt the capital improvements plan, the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan that was prepared by Molsen Corbin. I would defer to Molsen Corbin and specifically to Mr. Montoya if there are any questions about that plan. The gist of it is that Molsen Corbin has prepared new land use assumptions, a new capital improvements plan. If you adopt the ordinance, they will become your new land use assumptions and capital improvements plan for the impact fees that are imposed on new connections of water and wastewater. The proposal at this time is not to change the present fees, which I believe are $150 per fixture unit. As to the legal need for this, I would, and any other legal matters, I would stand for questions.
Thank you. Manager Madrid, questions, comments, concerns?
No concerns. I think we have had a lot of discussion on this. We have had public hearings regarding this. This is just our final before we need to adopt.
And I will say, I have reviewed the work that Molsen Corbin did on this, and it comes with our recommendation as well as Molsen Corbin's.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Appel, I believe you've made it very clear that this is a desperate need for us to do.
Well...
It's like past that point. It's, you know, so, so I appreciate the fact that you haven't dropped the ball on us with this one, that you keep, you know, saying, "Come on, guys, let's do this." And the other comment that I would like to make, Mayor, is that I asked Commissioner Zagetti, who was on the PUAP board at the time when this was going through, the last time before we put this to publication, and if he has any comments he'd like to make, but I think it was very clear that it was thoroughly looked at, not only by our Public Utility Advisory Board, but by our legal team, and also by our mayor, our manager. And I believe that we have a fiduciary responsibility to go ahead with this. That's my comment.
If I may.
Thank you.
Mayor, Madam Mayor Protam, you reminded me of something that should be said, that is that this comes to you with the recommendation of your Public Utility Advisory Board in its capacity as your capital improvements advisory board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor, I think before we take action on this, we do have to have one final opportunity for public hearing, is that correct?
Yeah, in the public hearing, it'll open, allow the public hearing, it can close it public hearing, and then we can go to the final round.
Okay, I will now open for public hearing. And do we have anybody that would like to make any comments? Do we have any proponents, opponents, public, anybody that would like to speak on behalf of this public hearing for this ordinance number 701? Seeing and hearing none, I will close this public hearing, and I will now stand for a motion to approve ordinance number 701, approving the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan, final report as presented by Tracy Burnett, John Appel, our City Attorney, and John Montoya, Molsen and Corbin.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to move for final approval of ordinance number 701, approving the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan, final report as presented by Tracy Burnett, our Grant Projects Coordinator and Zoning Official, John Appel, City Attorney, and John Montoya from Molsen Corbin.
Thank you, Commissioner Zagetti. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 701. Is there any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying a roll call. It needs a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barca?
Aye.
Honorable George Zagetti?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item G2, Discussion Action Resolution Number 37, 2018, 2019, approving the drinking water revolving loan DWRL application for the purpose of financing the cost of replacing high-risk water lines identified in the asset management plan. Excuse me, Tracy Burnett, our Grant Projects Coordinator and Zoning Official.
Mayor, Mayor Protam and Commissioners, this is just our final step in accepting the offer for the drinking water state revolving loan fund. As previously mentioned in the previous meetings, this is for some high-risk, high-risk water lines located on Marshall Street, from Steel Street to Platinum, on North Pershing Street, from Main Avenue to Second Avenue, East Second Avenue, from Pershing Street to Silver Street, and Sierra Vista Drive, from Sixth Avenue to Ninth Street. It'll also address part of our water system SCADA. The city qualified for 50% principal forgiveness on this. We did initially apply for $1,228,797.26. The forgiveness amount has changed slightly from what was in the documents that were put out on the original agenda. We did get a email and forwarded to all the commissioners on Monday where they had changed the subsidy cost of the issuance amount, lowering the total amount of our loan, which is always a positive thing. So that amount was a principal amount of $620,543, and our subsidy amount of $620,479.94. So our total application, as I said, was $1,228,797. Our payback on this is $1,241,022, so very little interest on there as well. This has been reviewed by legal. We spoke with the city manager as well on this, and at this time, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Manager Madrid.
Director Lynn, your approval, this should be an easy one, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, I stand for a motion to approve Resolution Number 37, 2018, 2019, approving the drinking water revolving loan application, as presented by Tracy Burnett.
Salute, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 37, 2018, 2019. Is there any further questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Yeah, there is one. Thank you so much for funding water, money. It just makes me so happy. Thank you, Tracy.
No wrong coming.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Barca?
Aye.
Honorable George Zagetti?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is item G3, Discussion Action Resolution Number 38, 2018, 2019, supporting the necessary element of some of the on-street parking on the south, on the south side of Main Street and Foch Street. Randall Aragon, our Chief of Police.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Renee, this is a situation I observed, I think, the first day I arrived into the city. And I probably, there's no one in this room that would not raise their hand if I said if you've ever been almost a near miss at that suicide corner, as I call it. Anyway, I have with, with me today, I thank you for coming, Mr. Harold Love, who's the Assistant District Engineer, Engineering Support for District One, Department of Transportation, and Assistant Marie.
I hear you, ma'am.
Yes. And they came in from Demme to support this recommendation. The agenda request is pretty clear. It's about a one minute, one second window before you are in a crash, maybe another half a second, if you're lucky. In fact, the city attorney mentioned he had a near miss today. And that is a major intersection that we have to go through, or you have to go out a mile out of the way to get there, so. Renee, can you show the diagram? I took a Google Earth shot, and I think we all know. In fact, I, for some reason, there's not been any cars parked there. Maybe they anticipated this happening, but there's not been any cars there for the last four days. It's amazing. Right here, this is north, east, west, south. Basically, when you get to the corner, I guess we all know this, I'm sure no one's, it's not a mystery, when you get here to cross over Main, the sight picture or triangulation, which should be, you can't see, and you got about a second, maybe a second and a half. And just my guesstimation, Mr. Love, who might want to say something, it's probably going to take about three cars, three car lengths not to be parked there, and you'll be safe. So right now, it's about that distance. And Mr. Love mentioned initially the limiters, which I didn't know what that was. It's rubber stanchions, and we do need a sign there that states no parking from that point to the corner, but there's other things they have in mind, perhaps. So with that, I'll entertain any questions?
Thank you. Manager Madrid.
Mr. Love, would you give us your assessment? Thank you for being here.
I went out and reviewed the situation with the chief and determined that there is a safety issue there with not being able to see traffic coming around the curb there. And we, I told him with support from the city, the department will be able to do out and do an analysis, determine how much areas needs to be taken to remove the parking so we can create the proper site triangle that's needed, so you can see the traffic coming around the curb.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Farquhar.
Mr. Love, it's nice to see you again. It's been many years. Thank you so much for coming up, and I always have, I appreciated your expertise. One of the main questions I have, I certainly agree with the chief, because I do that, little intersection at least once a day, and sometimes five and six and seven times, and it is frightening. And I remember when we did the initial design for resurfacing downtown Broadway and Main Street, and we had to put in the ADA curb and gutter and those kind of things. And a comment that I've made before is DOT was having a problem when we were wanting to put trees in the corners. Do you remember that, when that was going down? So that's been a while. That dates you and me, Ben. And the concern was that one tree right on the corner, chief, that, that there would be a lack of visibility. So somewhere in there, I think we missed the concept of an actual vehicle parking right there, which is even, you know, you can see through the tree trunk, you can't see through a car, a truck. That being said, is there something in particular, knowing that, that these are DOT streets, they're not city streets? Do we have to have some kind of a special written acknowledgement from the state to, to allow that to be a no parking zone? Is that, or can we do that ourselves? I guess the question is, we've got a resolution here for the city, but the city doesn't own that property. It's owned by the state. And so it wouldn't be that the state needs to, I'm asking a question because I don't know the answer, but doesn't the state need to participate with that or give the city permission to, to cut those parking spaces out of that street?
I think the state does that. In fact, I think, I think we actually, the last paragraph, I think, actually contemplated.
Clears that.
I mean, so, I guess I directed when, he was actually, I had written a question to you, because I understand what's happening, is the city has to pass this resolution in order for you to consider it, or request, to take this, take the actual request in. And I don't know, have you had a chance to see the resolution? Have you thought about anything to say?
Yes, chief sent me a copy of it, and yes, what we're looking for from the city is support.
And that's what the resolution would do. Well, maybe, you know, maybe just for the sake of everybody who's listening, let me read the last paragraph of the resolution so everybody's familiar with what we're actually asking the department to do. And I'm looking at the resolution that the commission would be considering. Now therefore be resolved by the commission of the city of true consequences, hereby support the recommendation at M.D., install traffic control devices, pavement or present signage, which is required to eliminate on-street parking, added term by M.D. the safety and protection of our citizens and everyone who visits our community. If you have read that, and that, if you have read that back to your language?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Love, is that, is this then, is this going to be done then on an encroachment notice to the city, or is this just going to be, you're going to just go ahead and do it?
Being that it's a state facility, we'll just go ahead and do it.
Okay. Can you do it fast?
As fast as state government can do things.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Hello, Mr. Love.
How are you?
Long time no see.
Yes.
How have you been?
Good, good.
Just a general question, and I certainly approve this concept, and I understand the details. I assume that the shop owners have been contacted and notified that this is taking place, and I'm hoping that they have been. And the other thing is that, where, chief, would we recommend some alternate parking in order to access those places of business, if there is any?
Good question. As I mentioned, you know, we're not like Albuquerque. If someone's parking there now, they don't have to walk four blocks. There's probably within 100 yards, the radius is someplace to park, so you're talking about maybe three cars. And I don't think it, I think the, the benefit analysis of possibility of fatality versus, you know, moving the cheese a little bit, 100 feet, is well worth it. So I think there's parking around there in some radius. I know that would be an issue.
And the shop owners, have they been notified?
Well, I've talked to Linda, but DeMarina was here. In fact, she told me on our first guide, I mentioned that. She said every day she hears cars screeching at that corner. In fact, she's been a, almost a near miss with her, I believe. So that is going to be an issue. People are going to be a little bit concerned that we have to walk 100 feet more. But in the long run, we're looking at an action waiting to happen, really. And everybody in here has probably had a near miss, so I really want to save a life, and I think it's well worth it.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Manager Madrid.
Recommend your approval, ma'am.
Thank you. I do have one question. Mr. Love, how, what's the timeframe on this, once this resolution is passed? When is this, when is this going to happen? And what can the downtown people expect?
It's a busy time of year for us, but with the, you know, getting our patrol, which will probably do the work, getting the required devices that we need, plus doing the engineering analysis that we, that we initially need to do, I'm asking if you can give us three weeks to get this done?
That, that's perfect. I would just like to make sure that our, our public is aware that this is happening in the area, so that they can use more caution, because I do know that that is a very dangerous area, and I thank you.
Okay, is it possible to put like cones there while we're waiting for Mr. Love to do his gig? That, that I don't know.
I don't think it can.
It's a state, it's a state, yeah, so.
I would say wait this long, I would wait until the department does their thing.
Right, and we would just, again, like to be notified when this is going to start, so that we can let the public know that this is happening in the area, and again, to take extra precaution and to slow down, because I do know that they drive quite fast in that area. So again, thank you. I will now stand for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 38, 2018, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 30- I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 38, 2018, 2019, supporting the necessary elimination of some of the on-street parking on the south side of Main Street and Footh Street as presented by our chief, Chief Aragon and Mr. Love from DOT. Is there any further questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call Rol?
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Rolf Heschler?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Bucka?
Aye.
Honorable George Segetti?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item G4, Public Hearing Discussion Action. Public hearing and authorize and approve staff to submit documents related to an application for federal assistance under system improvements preliminary engineering report. Tracy Burnett, Grants Project Coordinator and Zoning Official.
Mayor, Mayor, Proclamations, Commissioners, this is just kind of a standard procedure that USDA does require when we are looking at submitting an application for funding. And so this is the public hearing portion. We will be submitting an application to USDA for water line improvements, specifically in the downtown area, which is designated within our preliminary engineering report. It'll also address our storage issues at the Cook Street Water Treatment Plant and address data systems as well within the water system. I think in your agenda packet, you'll have a map that shows the water lines that'll be addressed in the downtown area. The storage, we would be putting a secondary tank up there to assist with water storage. And then the final map does show the data system RTUs that will be addressed. The city has procured our water engineering services with Wilson and Company. That's been approved through USDA, and they would be assisting us in updating our preliminary engineering report as requested by USDA. And we are probably looking at approximately preliminary figures in 2017, I think, when the PER was previously updated, were about $8.9 million for this entire system improvement. We might be moving up a little bit higher past the $9 million mark, because the environmental for this project in the downtown area is going to be a little bit larger and lengthier, given a historical district. So at this time, I would stand for any questions?
Thank you. This is open for public hearing, right?
Yes.
So do we have any questions, comments, concerns? Manager Madrid.
I think the first thing that we should do is formally open up the public hearing. If there is anyone that would like to speak for or against this, I have a sign sheet that's required. Otherwise, we can proceed with the discussion now.
Okay. This, we are now open for public hearing on this. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Proponents, opponents, public, anyone? Hearing none, I will now close this public hearing. Commissioners, do we have any questions, comments, concerns?
So 8.9 million?
That was our...
That was 2017?
Correct.
So we're probably at the, you know, standard deviation of a million on here, because we have no idea what we're going to find. We've had that discussion in these streets.
Right, so what will happen is Wilson and Company will review the existing PER that was previously done by Smith Engineering. They'll update any concerns that, since that was originally done in 2014, the probable costs were updated by Smith Engineering in 2017. So Wilson and Company will review the entire project, make sure there isn't any other issues or concerns that need to be updated related to the main project. Then they will update their probable costs from their engineering standpoint, and then we'll actually submit the application for whatever the engineer's probable cost is.
And the USDA is going to fund how much of this, and we're going to fund how much of this?
So USDA will make a determination based on, of course, our overall project, our overall project costs, and then they'll, part of the application process will be how many services we have, what our revenue source is, what the water revenue source is, and then they do all of their underwriting to determine what portion we can afford and grant, and what portion would be loaned by USDA. And then we would present it to you at that time, and the commission would make a decision whether or not to move forward.
Mayor, can I defer this over to Manager Madrid for a minute, please?
Sure. Please do so.
So the financing, and I am understanding that you've had a chance with Tracy to look at this, and before we make an application for another almost $9 million, that we've got to take care of. So I ask you...
Commissioner, very good question. These loans from the federal government and grants are taken very seriously on both sides. On one hand, USDA requires that we provide financial statements, including our balance sheet and our cash flow projections. They look at the past, they determine their own, from the information that we provide, their own trends, where they predict where our revenues are going to be. They compare that to what we submit. They also compare that to our reports that they're required to get every year as a major funding source. They do all of that independent of what we submit in our application. What we submit in our application comes from our own internal records. In anticipation of that, I have been reviewing our debt service schedule for the entire city as a whole, particular to a project like this. Tracy and I, I believe we have a meeting with the commissioner by the 30th tomorrow? Or Friday morning?
Yes.
Anyway, just to ensure that even if our revenues went flat in this enterprise fund, which they are not, they are always increasing, we would have to have a severe drought and restrictions for our revenues to just flatten out. But what we're in the process of doing with the finance authority alone, and we're going to be doing with a lot of our other debt in review, is restructuring and refinancing to lower rates, paying off what we can take, and what we've discussed with the finance authority so far, is just by restructuring, not having any new debt at all, we will be saving over $220,000 in the long term in interest payments, and we will be saving, we will be reducing our debt service by about $65,000 a year, between $45,000 and $65,000 a year, just in this area alone. So we always hope that things get better, but even if they didn't, we would have the resources to enter into this particular agreement. And, you know, Commissioner, you've talked about investing in infrastructure. People call you and us because of leaks, or inconvenience, or outages, but this also is going to mean that our system is going to become more efficient, and our system loss will drop significantly. It will generate more revenue based on a better system, so that we can keep a better system. I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, you did, Manager Madrid. Thank you very much. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Madrid.
If I may follow up with one thing, do keep in mind that application to USDA, just like with our wastewater application, it is going to get to a point in our application process where it will force us to go into a rate analysis as well with our water rates. And so we are looking at, you know, potential, it's been 2007 was the last time our water rates were increased, and so, you know, that'll be also a way to look at the revenue for the payback of the loan that USDA will make that determination and recommendation.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
Yes.
Commissioner Segetti?
Yeah, this is a big project, and we're going to wind up digging up a lot of the roadways, and there's a lot of old water lines down there, but there's also a lot of old sewer lines down there. So, you know, it seemed to be a matter of being more efficient if we can take care of the sewer lines at the same time than we do the water lines. And I know they're not always co-located, but do we have anything in there in the works that would allow us to expand that and actually do work with the nearby sewer lines while we're digging up the roads?
I can tell you with Wilson and Company, the engineers that we have there, they're very aware of the challenge that we face with kind of a multi-project, water line, sewer line, and roadway. You guys first met then when we were looking at the all-in-one project down there on the McAdoo and Sims. And so as they proceed forward with their preliminary engineering report on the USDA side, it's always in the back of their mind to make maybe a recommendation if they come across an area that they think might be better served as a large project. There again, that projection and cost would have to go to the city manager, and he would have to look at what the wastewater department, as well as the streets department or the general fund could support. Luckily, water and sewer lines aren't close together, so it wouldn't necessarily, I mean, that's a bigger project. You're talking about digging up one side of the street for water and maybe another side of the street for sewer, so.
And the one thing I, another thing that I'm asked about quite frequently goes back to when I was on the utility board, is, again, why aren't we looking at putting the power lines underground in the downtown area while we're doing all of this work? I know that's an entirely different ballgame when we get into that, but have we even looked at that option, you know?
Right now, there's not a lot of funding available, grant funding available for the electrical. I'm not sure why that infrastructure is so hard to find grant funds. Maybe because they're leaning a little bit more green. You know, you might have some funding out there for municipal buildings going into solar. I will tell you that our streets department, and I think that Manager Madrid can contest to this, came across a lot of obstacles just in the McAdoo area with that extremely low water table. And so the downtown area is extremely scary to do any type of construction, whether it be water, streets, any of that. And so the cost, we have to decide whether or not dealing with all of that de-watering and extra compacting and the extra cost that entails outweighs, you know, moving things around that way.
Commissioner, in regard to the electrical part, though we haven't looked at it, but I guess the short answer would be, in any situation like that, we would look at it as a cost versus benefit. Now, is there, if there's an issue with the delivery of electricity in the areas because of the location of the lines, then that may be something, if it's just for aesthetics, it's probably a lower priority. As Tracy said, that's answering your first question, part of the reason that I'm reviewing all of the debt service structure is that in the event that we can address sewer lines and water lines at the same time, I want to be able to come up with a large amount of money to do that in a short period of time. So essentially, what we're doing is we're doing an internal financial assessment in case we need credit quickly before we open up the ground, we should know that we can take care of both lines at once, so we don't do exactly what I know would give all of us a headache, is close the street up and open it up again. We don't want to do that.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I will now stand for a motion to approve staff, and approve staff to submit documents related to an application for federal assistance under USDA and RUS for water system improvements as defined by the city, by TRC Water System Improvements Preliminary Engineering Report as presented by Tracy Burnett. Do I have a motion?
So over here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Manager Madrid? Nothing?
Thank you, Commissioner. For one minute.
I have one comment, Mayor. I'd like, I really, really appreciate what Ms. Burnett and Manager Madrid have said to us, and that they're trying to look forward-thinking instead of just doing one part of this at a time. And it is kind of, it sounds like a complicated venture, and I really appreciate the fact that you're taking it on and tackling it. And I want to thank both of you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
By the opposing sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is Item H, New Business Discussion Action Fiscal Year 2019, 2020, allocations for subrecipient applications. Manager Madrid?
Mayor, Commissioners, before I get started, I want to clarify something with our attorney. I think it's real simple. The agenda item notes discussion and action allocations for subrecipient applications. Now, my interpretation of that language is that they can be acted upon individually, collectively, it really doesn't matter.
I think that's in your discretion. I know what we've done in the past is that it would be a motion, which actually would describe, oh, this thing, here's this particular agency, and here's how much money that we need willing to allocate, and we actually could do it in one motion. So I think it's your discretion, play honestly, and that's how we've done in the past.
Okay, good, because what I would like to do, and I'm going to hand you a revised worksheet, and is the content is exactly the same, there was one formula there that was not some in property, that's all. The content is exactly the same that was in the original tackles. What I would like to do is give you a brief summary of all the applicants, what they do, what they're asking for, and how it changed from previous years, because we didn't have any new applicants. They're all repeat requests. Then there is one anomaly, there is one group that was previously funded that did not meet the application requirements, but has since met the requirements, and the reason given seems to be understandable. We'll have that discussion after the overview. If that's, if that's okay with the Commissioners, we can hold a discussion until I give you an overview, then I'll just go ahead and proceed. The Companion Animal Action Team, it was cat, they are requesting $3,000 in funding. They had been approved for 1,500 last year. The additional funding is to be put towards their stay in unit program and their emergency The Domestic Abuse Intervention Center had previously been funding for 2,500. They are requesting $5,000 this year. The additional 2,500 is to provide additional administrative support, not actual program expenses. The Friends of Elephant Butte, they are requesting $1,000, that was their funding level last year, and this is mainly to go toward the cost of the fireworks display for the Fourth of July, and that has been a recurring thing. The Geronimo Springs Museum, they had requested 4,600 last year and were approved for that. This year, their request has been increased to $5,000. The additional items will be for administrative support in administrative and utility costs. The Geronimo Trail scenic highway, they are requesting $5,000, that's the same as last year. These funds are primarily used for promotional items and at the visitor center in the Le Bel Johnson Center. The Main Street Program, they are requesting the same amount that was funded last year, $35,000. All these funds will be used for administrative support for the program, part of its salaries and other administrative expenses. The Massey 25 Food Battery, they were funded for 7,200 last year. They are requesting 8,000 this year. The additional 800 should, would be put towards rent and additional insurance. The SDOA, Sierra Joint Office on Aging, they... Joint Office on Aging, they requested and were approved for $46,814 last year. Their request is $47,000 for this year, and the additional funding is to be used for the units of service and delivery, including especially in the LEO program. The city generally contributes up to 6% of their cost, and that is in line with that. The... All of these applications were complete. They were done in compliance with our requirements. We require a certificate of non-taxable status. We require a certificate of good standing from the Secretary of State's office. We also require the most recent financial statement or audit report. All of these organizations supplied all of the required information. I'm recommending all of them for funding. Before, at their request, now, before we continue with any action on that, I want to talk about the Club of Sierra County. The Club of Sierra County did not submit all of the required information in the packet as the other ones did. I wrote them a letter enumerating all the deficiencies in the application, and that letter was received and addressed right then. And there's a copy of it, and there's information that was submitted to be in response to the letter. The deficiencies were, the application was not on our form, didn't have the complete information, didn't have the financial statement, didn't have the certificate of non-taxability or good standing. It was explained to me that the organization is going through a transition in the administrative part of that. And the person that spoke here earlier was not completely familiar with the process. Notifying that, they did provide everything, knowing that I did inform them that I would not recommend them for funding because they did not meet the timeline and the required information. I did say, however, that that could be considered in extenuating circumstances. They have been funded in the past. It seems that because of the services they do provide to our youth and their record of performance, they may deserve consideration. That's why I'm distributing this to you now, because I don't think it's unreasonable to consider it at least. So I'm recommending funding for all of the other ones, and I am telling you that I think it's reasonable that we consider the club for funding also based on their circumstances, based on their immediate response and the completeness of their package and their history of funding.
Thank you, Manager. What was their funding last year for the club to?
If you would ask, the only thing that I don't count, I think it was about the same amount.
It was $10,000, so they're asking for double this year?
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a comment question.
Mayor approach him.
It seems to me that we had this discussion about the club last year when we went to the subrecipient, if you can remember. Do you remember that discussion, Commissioner Heschler?
I do.
And we made a decision based on the something, to put 10 down for them. And there was something that we did kind of as a gift, because we recognized that youth is very important in our community. I'm a little bit disturbed that this is once again coming in front of us without complete information. And once again, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but we made a decision because we feel that our youth is so much more important than a piece of paper that didn't make it to the right place at the right time on the right format. And then again, nobody else is asking for double the amount except for the CAT and domestic abuse, and that's not... The dollar figure is a little different than an extra $10,000. So I'm just kind of on the fence with this $20,000 request when we kind of went out of our way last year to put the $10,000 down for them. Am I correct on that one?
Yes.
So I'd like some other feedback on it, because I don't have a good answer on this one.
And again, this is kind of a continuation every year, every year, and, you know, the public, the entities that apply for these funds know what our rules and regulations are. You know, they know that they can call the city clerk or the city manager anytime. I've been here for a while, and every year, we seem to have to jump this hurdle for someone because of some reason or another. And all we ask is that you follow our guidelines. There's deadlines to be met. There's policies to be met. There's procedures to be done. And things do change periodically. You can't do something for five years and expect it to be on the same form or policy six years later. So if you plan on applying for any funding from the city, please check into what the format is and how to proceed with this. We don't want to turn down anyone. And, you know, we appreciate everything everybody does, and we know that there's always a cost of living and a cost of doing things. Every year, it changes. Where I'm going with this is because the club, once again, failed to follow their policy, I wouldn't mind, and this is just me, I wouldn't mind giving them what they requested last year and what we gave them last year, because again, they are working with the youth of our community. The youth of our community is just as important as the seniors of our community. So again, we have to look at everything. But what I will ask one more time, and I hope the public and I hope these folks are listening, please check into our policies, procedures, and formatting so that we do not have to look at this situation as, do we or don't we? You know, we've had... We've specified how we want things done, and from here forward, that's the way we should look at it, is you follow our policies and procedures and formatting, and we're happy to work with you.
Mayor, I just came up with a recommendation. I think it would be entirely wrong to increase the funding based on the lack of preparation and application. I think it would be rewarding that behavior if we did that. Regardless of the circumstances, I would take it small step further and recommend that because of that, and as a statement to any other organizations that might want to come around the process into these chambers with a sympathetic story, that it be cut a little bit from the prior year also.
That would work.
By $1,000, something that will not materially hurt the program, because that involves the youth, but will be an incentive to get it right next time.
Kami would like to make a comment.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry, there is another paper in the packet. It should be in the packet, and I know I gave it to Mr. Madrid. It was our recommendations that we wrote with Renee. It's in red lettering. Not all the packets were 100% complete. Some of them, in this recommendation letter, actually state, recommend approving them contingent upon them fixing what's wrong with their packet. One was missing a signature. And then the IRS and the SOS site was really wishy-washy, and I guess they might have changed the layout of it. So I had to walk people through on the phone, some people, and some people submitted the first part of it, but when you searched your organization, your name came up in blue. Some of them didn't click their name on blue, in the blue, and it didn't go to the next page, which actually said that they were nonprofit, like PC or stuff like that. That's the part that we needed printed or something like that, something to that nature. But some of them were contingent... Some of them were 100% complete, but in this document is the one that says that contingent upon what, fixing whatever's missing in their document.
And we did have to do some additional verification. For example, the Geronimo Springs Museum is not a nonprofit corporation. It is a charitable foundation. It is still nonprofit status, but is not considered a final one C3. So we did go through this process. In a lot of cases, we went to the Secretary of State's website ourselves and the IRS website ourselves to do this confirmation.
And the one, there's one of... I think it's the same one, might be the one that their name doesn't match. Yeah, the name on the application doesn't match their supporting documents. That's just because they're under the historical society, and that's why their stuff doesn't match. Just things like that.
Of course, are because we don't make our applications specific enough. And where, for example, if you're applying for a federal grant, you say a contractor must be registered in the SAM system. What does that stand for, Tracy?
Yeah, SAM.
System Access Management or something. It's very specific. We don't do that, so we have to be able to verify our general requirements in general ways.
I have another comment. I'm just going to kind of just change the channel here a little bit.
I can get to them, Mike.
Okay, so one of the comments that I would like to make is this. We also last year had a hard time raising up the amount of monies that we put forward because, you know, it's like adding more stress to the finance person and, as a manager, to find the monies for this. And because we have a new manager, even though I find him extraordinarily capable in the finance department, there is the concept of allowing this manager to at least have some similarity with last year's budget figures when he goes into making this budget for us. And that being said, kind of out of courtesy to our new manager, who's now acting as finance manager, if he's playing with last year's figures, I can see how it worked and how they were funded without having to find new funds. I'm trying to... I'm not protecting him. I'm just making a comment here that, because I know I have all of these that you probably could find him, but maybe that just that we should stay similar to what we were last year in these dollar figures. And then the next year, or if we find that we have extra funding someplace that we can readdress if we have more monies to put to another organization, but maybe just out of a common courtesy for putting a new budget together and truth and consequences that hasn't happened before, that maybe we ought to keep a status quo here. It's just a comment.
Yeah.
I'm watching a face. That's fine. Come on, Rebecca.
I want to add a comment to that. I have to believe by now, Manager Madrid, that you have some sense of what the budget is going to be.
Some, yeah.
And so I would rely on your recommendation, obviously, to know whether you have strong capability for this funding, or if you feel marginal, or if you think you're going to just squeeze by by the hair or her teeth. So give us a sense of that.
With this and any other budget, my approach has been, and even with the department heads, submit your budget to me. If I see a flat budget, I am delighted. If I see a budget that's being reduced, I get up and do it in that. If I see a budget that's requesting an increase, then I go like this, and I say, oh my gosh, we're going to have to take a real good look at that one. This is in the same category, and the short answer is, the flatter the better for this year, because honestly, I will have enough knowledge to submit a budget that will be approved, but it will not be our best budget for this year. Our best budget is a year away.
So your recommendation today would be?
Well, I would... The simplest thing would be to keep the funding levels all at the same level, or lower. I think all at the same level would be fine, because what... All I have to do is change the current year cash balance and next year's projections to finish up this budget. That would be the simplest thing, and I don't think it would hurt any of the programs.
So Mayor, if we flatlined this, it actually drops $1,000 because Wildflowers is no longer in existence.
Correct.
I might just add that, you know, I think the Commission has a wide amount of discretion on these type of investigations here. We obviously want people to follow the guidelines, you know, that's what they're for. But, you know, the Commission does have the authority to have this type of discussions to really what's appropriate, and it's that there are some quirks in some of these applications that the Commission does have the authority to use discretion to, you know, to do what feels appropriate or what's appropriate funding. One question I'm always asked over here when we have this, I want to make it clear that these are not free look explanations. What I anticipate will follow is that there will be a contract drawn between the city and each of these agencies, and the contracts will be very specific, which will describe what services we can expect in exchange for the funds that we're allocating. Therefore, it's looked at as maybe a bargain for exchange, and this is the money we're allocating, and these are the services we expect. And that's why these applications are always helpful for me when I draw these contracts, because the application needs to set forth what those planned services are. So that's kind of where we're headed to with this discussion.
That's a good point, Jake, because some of these agreements, some are very specific, some are not specific. And I think the Domestic Abuse Intervention is a good example of that. It is a community service program, and we contribute a small piece to their operations because it's in the public interest. That doesn't mean that if there's a need for service, we don't make sure that the providers of that service verify residency or anything like that. It's... Let me give you an analogy. If we ran a homeless shelter, we wouldn't check identifications to make sure that only city residents were in that shelter overnight. As a community, I think this is... These are quality of life issues, and as long as they contribute to the community itself, even though maybe not directly, the paying the phone bill for the Joint Office on Aging doesn't contribute directly to their meals, it contributes to the service of those youths. So yes, there is agreement and a specific provision on the services. There is a quarter of reporting that you have in your packets today to make sure that they follow the objectives of those youths that live up to them. And that's something that without verification of the services, we do not provide payment. So it is an exchange of services, yes.
Thank you, Manager Madrid. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
I'd like to make one final recommendation. Manager Madrid, I buy into your proposal. I think that's a fair assessment. The $1,000 that we're saving from Wildflowers, since they did not reapply, I would like to consider or have the board consider reallocating that to CAT, mainly because of the huge impact untended bats and animals have on this community and other communities. And the service that they provide is invaluable, and I would like to see it continue and even be enhanced. And they're doing a wonderful service for this community. So we could keep the previously flatline by reallocating that $1,000 to CAT, and then I would be happy with that idea.
Thanks for taking the words out of my mouth, Commissioner Heschler.
Okay.
I can...
In regard to the... I'm sorry, but...
I want to...
Okay, I, I wanna, I'll just make a comment on, I was looking again through the, uh, all of the applications last night. And if I, if I was reading it right, um, the Matthew twenty-five food pantry last year operated at a deficit of twenty-five hundred dollars. Okay? And then I looked at the statement from the Friends of Elephant Butte Park, and they were, uh, over eight thousand dollars ahead of their expenses last year. Uh, and if we were donating money for the fireworks, their, the fireworks cost them about thirteen thousand, but they raised twenty-four thousand to support the fireworks. Um, if we're, you know, if we're looking at need when we're making these allocations, I see that, uh, you know, the, the real need is not necessarily where the money is, is being allocated. Okay, all right. But I, it, it kind of, it kind of bothers me that we have other agencies, particularly the ones that providing vital services that are, you know, that are running in the red, but we have another, uh, recipient that's healthily in the green and, uh, and we're, uh, sending money there. If we were, you know, if we were able to cover everything, if the money, if budget was not an issue, you know, I'd say, fine, it, it is a quality of life thing and it's good support. But it does kind of, uh, it, it rings a bell with me when I, when I see that, uh, that they are actually bringing in substantially more money than they are spending.
I just...
Another question from John, is it possible from the Friends, because I don't know if that statement is completely correct, so...
Okay, well, I, I, it, I mean, I, I'm just looking at the financial statement, if, you know, I'm...
Friends, Friends of Elephant Butte? Come on, yeah.
Yeah.
My name is Carla Johnson, and I'm the treasurer for the Friends of Elephant Butte Lake State Park, and also the fundraising person. And our biggest fundraiser is for the fireworks. Last year, the cost of the fireworks was twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars. And this year, it's kind of up in the air because we have a different vendor providing our fireworks, which is our local fire department, by the way. Um, the money will be spent this year on, um, purchasing equipment and, um, and for the fireworks, we're actually using someone else's equipment, you know, all of the tubes and everything, the electronics. But then, part of using it is we're purchasing it, so it will be ours from then on. Um, the cost of the, actually, our local fire department is going to be shooting off our fireworks this year. They're gonna be going through training and that sort of thing. So the thousand dollars goes to help offset the cost of, of that. We don't just ha, we don't just raise money for fireworks. Um, we also have, our, our mission is to raise money to support our state park, to bring visitors there, and we hold events and we do fundraising. The Easter egg hunt recently on Saturday, where we had, you know, like five hundred kids and all their families come. Um, and that's completely supported by donations. Um, so we have other things that we use our money for. We also purchase things for the state park that they can't get the money to do. We bought them an ice machine last year, an ice maker, uh, for the Rangers and all the helpers for the summer. So, um, fireworks is expensive, and, and I understand your point. Um, our, our need is not for, and this, this is what hurts me personally, to even ask for the money, because we blow it up, if you want to sit here and look at it that way. Ours is more economical development. It's supporting T R C, the gas stations, all the people that come here for the park. There's a hundred and forty thousand people that come just that weekend to this area, and it supports everyone. Um, so that is, like, like I said, I feel bad personally, because, you know, we're feeding elderly people and we're doing, helping animals and that sort of thing. So to me, I have a hard time doing, even doing this sometimes, and asking for that. So that's why we've kept the money the same in the past, but we're asking for you to grant it, but if you do not, I understand.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, um, I was just looking at the, uh, the profit-loss statement in the other application, and the figures I quoted are off of that statement, and that, you know...
Right.
That's what we're using to make our decision, then, then we're not getting...
Right.
What you're saying is that we're not getting a complete picture of, of your activities and your actual expenses.
And also, being the treasurer, I can speak from this, usually when we pay for the fireworks, we have to pay for half of it ahead of time, and then we pay half of it after the event. So usually in January, we pay, we would pay twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for that. And then we make the second payment, payment after the show, contingent on their performance. Um, one year, the, the show was awful, and so we didn't pay them as much. It, it was, two years ago, it was horrible. So, um, we haven't made that payment this year, in January, because we didn't have a vendor. So that's why our profit is higher than it was, because we didn't make that first payment at January, because we don't want to use that vendor we used before. So that's, if that has any bearing on the sub, on the subject.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
Senator Mayor?
Yes.
If I might interject this, Commissioner, is, is that okay? Um, I wanted to call your attention and remind you also with the fireworks, that we do have, I know there was a question in the past about how does it benefit the city of T R C, so I wanted to remind you of the shuttle. And the, um, I pulled it up, and they did have a nitro percent in writing ridership last summer, and have really gone above and beyond, as, um, City Manager Madrid can attest to the last meeting, in boosting it for this year. And so I wanted you to keep that in mind as well, as far as bringing people down to T R C and hotels that they do stay.
Thank you, Clerk Kenton.
Yeah, I'm not, I said, I'm not questioning that, I, again, um, just maybe an issue with, you know, what we require as part of the application, but the, uh, again, just looking at the profit-loss statement that was in the package seems to paint a, a different picture of their finances than what was just presented to us. And I'm wondering, is that something that we, do we need to change something on their requirements there?
Well, you know, Commissioner, I'm not sure, because, uh, there's, there's two schools of thought when, when you request financial information. I know as, as a granting entity, um, we want to know, number one, are they responsible enough to handle the money that we're gonna set up? Number two, do they need it? So, there's, there's kind of a fine line between, well, we have a deficit of so much, does that indicate that they need money, or that they're not responsible? If they have, uh, good surplus, does that indicate that they don't need it, or that they are very responsible? So, I, I think that, you know, that's, that's a hard, that's a hard question to answer.
Just a general comment, Manager, and I would say that if they have a surplus, then it, it's not a surplus, it goes back into the operation. It goes back into the support of the community, it goes back into the support of the Friends and the park, which in turn supports us. And I think we have to look at the big picture in this regard.
Well, and, and the other, the other, uh, issue is the, the, the main criteria for applying for this funding is you have to have nonprofit status. No, nobody will be making any money from what we're doing with any of this money. So I think that's a key also.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions, comments, concerns? Manager Madrid, your...
One question.
Okay.
In the recommendations to keep the funding flat or adjust one of the organizations, uh, to redistribute the wildflowers, uh, what would be the final determination, uh, in regard to funding for the club? Recurring, reduced, or, I don't know? I think increase would be on your list.
Well, I liked your idea, um, you know, I, I specified leaving it as it was last year. You said to decrease it a little bit, so what is the will of the, my other commissioners? How do you feel about that?
I think we should just leave it as it was.
Just leave it the ten?
Oh, Mayor, I'm just, to clarify, uh, if you left the club at last year's funding, and left all the other ones at last year's funding, we'll leave all the other ones at last year's funding, with the exception of, uh...
CAT.
CAT, which would receive an additional thousand dollars that was not allocated to Wildflowers. Would that be correct, in, in assuming that?
I would support that.
I guess I would support that. So we're gonna go with CAT at twenty-five hundred, um, domestic abuse at the twenty-five, as they had last year, Matthew twenty-five food pantry seventy-two, that they had last year, uh, Sierra Joint Office on Aging, the forty-six eight fourteen, which they had last year, and the club, um, the ten thousand dollars. And we're taking the thousand dollars from the Wildflower, which is no longer in existence, and placing it up to make the twenty-five hundred for the CAT. And Friends of Elephant Butte State Park, a, a thousand dollars, Geronimo Springs, uh, Museum forty-six hundred, as they had last year, Geronimo, uh, Trail, uh, Scenic Byway, five thousand, that they had last year, and Main Street of Truth or Consequences, the thirty-five thousand, as it was last year.
Got it.
Right it?
Got it.
What was that, that, was it the exact same, or did you go at forty-seven?
No, we went forty-six eight fourteen, just left it the same flat. Everything is, is staying just exactly the way it was last year. And again, what I've always asked that we do is it, you know, budget time is fixing to come up, so we have to look at our budget and what it's going to do. And at midterm budget, which is usually December, January, if we have any extra monies, at that time, I would suggest that all of these entities, um, if they need more money, or need additional whatever, that they come and visit with the manager and see where we can go. Uh, again, we're always here to try to help, but we have to help ourselves before we can help each other. Okay? All right, do I stand for a motion to accept these as noted?
I'm glad, uh, that I'm ready. You went through each item, you know, one by one, to what the allocation was, so I think a motion can be made to, uh, approve the allocations based on, you know, the listing you just gave from months ago.
Okay. Yep. I'll make that motion there. And I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the sub-recipient grant awards, as I noted, and I will note them one more time. Um, we're taking the Wildflower, uh, one thousand dollars and allocating that to CAT, so their allocation will be twenty-five hundred dollars. Domestic abuse will be twenty-five hundred dollars. Matthew twenty-five food pantry will be seventy-two hundred dollars. Joint Office on Aging, Sierra Joint Office on Aging, forty-six thousand eight fourteen, and the club will be ten thousand dollars. All of these will be at the same allocation as last year. Uh, Friends of Elephant Butte, one thousand dollars, Geronimo Springs Museum, forty-six hundred dollars, Geronimo Trail Scenic Byway, five thousand dollars, and Main Street Truth or Consequences, thirty-five thousand dollars. Are there any further questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Harry, none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Congratulations. And this is all contingent upon, um, verification of everything that wasn't as noted in the letter by Manager Madrid.
And it is also, as I pointed out earlier, it's also contingent upon just having a formal contract drawn up to set forth the services that are being provided, as per the applications.
Thank you, Attorney Ruben. All right, we are done with that. The next item on our agenda this morning is item I, reports, I one, City Manager Report.
Mayor, Commissioners, the first thing that I want to report on is, uh, some complaints that I got and maybe you got, about some new streets that we have. This is not unique to Truth or Consequences. Uh, sometimes new streets will generate compliments, and sometimes they generate the questions. But what about my street, or why are you doing that? Uh, just because you've got a new city manager, he has to pave the street in front of his office? So, I want to explain, um, some of the way that these particular streets were funded, and the way other streets were funded. In, uh, in this particular case, there was a capital outlay request made to the state of New Mexico. Uh, I used to work in that bureau. That, those requests, uh, number one, are confirmed to have existed in your, uh, capital improvement, uh, infrastructure capital improvement plan, did I get that right? And, uh, D F A and the Board of Familes have to confirm that. They are then considered with other, uh, capital outlay requests. These come, generally come from the issuance of bonds. The project that you're requesting has to last longer than the payment on the bonds that the state of New Mexico is gonna make. So the state is, is moving away from funding band uniforms from capital outlay money. That they're, they're not gonna do those kind of things anymore. And, uh, capital outlay reform is, is starting to take place. Uh, this funding came from capital outlays. When you submit the funding request, it's specific to the location and the type of project that you want to have. If you do not stick to that location, and you do not perform the project as submitted, you do not get the money. These projects were submitted, uh, at, at least a couple of years ago. They have a timeline to spend the money, they have a way to perform the actual construction. These streets were done, they were requested, funded, and constructed in the way that was submitted, uh, at least a year and a half ago. So, basically, the city was following through on a good idea. And I'm sorry if that offended anyone. But, that's the, the first, first part of my report. We have some other, uh, things that we're doing that may generate some, some more complaints. I hope they do, because there's good things that we are doing with bad things. And the first one, I'd like Tracy to come up and, and show us an example of what we're pursuing in our city. And while she does that, I'm gonna describe meetings that I've had with individuals that show up in these chambers regarding concerns about outdated or illegal signs, weeds. I actually went out riding around with, I don't think he'll mind you mentioning his name, Mr. Puchera, the other night, so he could point out his concerns. Uh, I'll encourage anybody to do that. But anyway, go ahead and show us the chat, Tracy.
Mayor, Mayor Clerk, I mean Commissioners, I think you will probably remember this residence, just a brief overview of this. I think it first came in front of you back in two thousand sixteen, this is, uh, thirteen oh eight ten street. Uh, we went through the resolution, uh, back with previous staff, finding the property dangerous and unsafe. Uh, I think it was appealed, uh, was approved, and then it was appealed, and went through quite the process, and I wanted to... What button do I push?
Right now.
Which one?
Right now.
Nope. They're pretty short, if you wanted to just flip through them, Renee, that would be fine. Um, so there is the front portion of the residence, and inside, these are previous pictures that were done by a previous staff member. You can flip right there.
Here, the top section is all.
And, uh, then when we get to the final picture, it's how it looks, uh, today. Right there. So that prob, the... that piece of property has been completely remediated at the city's expense. And so, the next step in this process will be paying for the demolition, and then that'll be turned over, and we would look at putting a lien on the property at this point in time. But we are working towards trying to get some of these properties taken care of. This was a three-year process. I'd like to see about moving a little bit quicker when we can on some of these. It was stagnant for about a year. So, and that's all I have for that report.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions from the Commissioners, Mayor?
No, thank you, Tracy.
That's a process that we're going to be more aggressive with. And like she said, we want to shorten the timeline on these things. We want to generate money from the sale of property that we own to pay for this, and make it a more self-sustaining endeavor, and make it nicer for our citizens. The other short announcement that I want to call the chief for is a recent notification that we had about our crime rate. And you'll see something more formal when we get our badge. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Madrid, Renee, this is something to be, to celebrate. I've talked to several of you on about, it's based on our crime rate. Safe-wise, it selected us as being the, this is pretty good, the eighth safest city in the state. There's 106 cities, 33 counties, and we're way up there. In order, just the first to top 10, Corales, Raton, Los Alamos, Rio Rancho, Edgewood, Portales, Anthony, TRC, Rosso, and Santa Fe. So, we really need to celebrate that. We're trying to bring in tourists. We know we're a retirement community. This is incredible. When you're selling a house, or renting a house, or want to figure out where to live, what do you think about first? Is it safe? My children? And we got it. And I just, I'm so very proud of that. I know you need to be, and you are. And we need to celebrate that and talk about it. If you're talking to anybody from another place, say, hey, we're number eight for our state. So, with that, any questions?
You got some new cars, Chief?
Sir?
You got some new police cars.
Yes, you all saw them, and they're real, we're real proud of that. And I'll tell you, we really are, fleet's great. It means, it makes our officers happy. It's safe, looks good. And I'm really thank you for doing that for us. Officers love that. That's their office. You know that? They go out to work, they sit in their car, and keeps them here. So, with that, any questions?
No, and we thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, Chief, I talked to Officer Peterson out there this morning, and he did say that the number of calls that they have to respond to has gone down. So, I mean, I mean, this is over the last couple of years, since the last time I went on a ride along with him. So, you know, that's a good thing.
Yes. And, you know, I knew our crime rate was low when I brought it out on our annual report. We're not going to rest on the laurels. We're going to keep this going. We've got to keep this, stay ahead of the curve, and do the right things right first time. Okay?
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, Commissioners, one other thing that I wanted to bring up, just as an idea for the future. In a meeting with some of the local people, and a lot of them show up here for public input, and their concern in wanting to meet with me is, they only have three minutes. That's a concern. That the meetings are held during the day is another concern. And they don't have the time, or sometimes can't get here to relay their ideas. So, one idea that I had in regard to public input, you know, these are truly business meetings, and they should be, they should be efficient, and they should stick to business, and not philosophy or saving the world. I think there's a place for that, always, but it's not always in these chambers. So, one thing that I think we might consider as an option for public input, and one of the meetings every month, is that, is to have, if you want to call it a town hall, or a meet with the manager in the evenings, same day of the commission meetings, as an alternative to public input, so that anyone that wants to talk about an issue, 99% of the time, you're going to have to come to the manager anyway. So, they might as well come and talk to me directly, and do it in the evening after their work hours, and no three-minute time limit, we'll sit around and discuss the issues. And I think that that would at least allow us to see, we're being open, and we're providing opportunities. So, some things to consider. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zagetti.
Chief.
Oh, City Attorney? He never has a report.
I really didn't have that much to say. I just, though, wanted to say, I appreciate Mr. Phil here. John has been working with you for several years. Together, can handle a lot of the issues that come up. And both of the questions, City Johnson, I couldn't come down. Maybe I'll just turn it over to you. I, you know, I always give some stuff I give reports on, some I don't, since you're here. Is there anything you wish to say? Surprise, surprise. I didn't expect me to say that, but, you know.
I will just say that, as Manager Madrid advised you earlier today, we were able to settle the long-term litigation that we've been for about two years related to the development fees. And I am pleased that that was settled, that, as usual, a price that you probably are not going to be happy to pay, it is a lot less than our having to take the case to trial in December.
Thank you, Attorney.
I made a statement up here earlier. Cat, and Diane Labardo, and Scares, and so forth, we've been talking about, Mr. Madrid knows this, I've talked to a couple of Commissioners, this sterilization effort. This is really important. That's the magic bullet for animal welfare, believe it or not, is sterilization. And we need, I'm going to have a meeting with the city manager, and Scares, and Cat, and my crew. We need to work up a solution where, I wish every animal that left, every companion, dog, cat, before it even left the shelter was sterilized. And this will, maybe we can work that out. And I know my staff are saying, if you do that, you're going to actually reduce your adoptions. We don't want to do that. But there's got to be a solution. No cities do that. We need funding. Maybe, I don't care if you're Ted Turner, I think it ought to be free. The animal should leave and be sterilized. And I agree with you on that. And they know that. But we got to work that out. So, Mr. Madrid, we're going to have a meeting on that in the future. We got to work up a solution, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Zagetti.
Okay. Well, first, I'm glad we finally put the impact fee issued to arrest. Having been in on that since day one, it's been a long process, and we made it. Okay. The other thing that I'm very happy to hear from the city manager, that we are pursuing the code issues, something I've talked with Chief Aragón, since the code enforcement is in his department. We have a long way to go. And I think there are some things we can do as a commission to tighten up our codes. There are some loopholes there, you know, like, you know, hiding a mess behind a wall is not a solution. But, you know, or throwing some tarps over it, you know. I think, you know, we as a commission, it's up to us to look at that. Because this all does reflect back on the safety issues. A long time, many years ago, this was brought forward in, I think it started in New York City, at something called the broken window theory, that if you have an area where the buildings are not kept up, the properties are not kept up, the crime rate goes up. In areas where the buildings are all maintained nicely, it's a symbol of law and order, and the crime rate goes down. And if we, you know, we're number eight now, but why can't we be number one? And I think one of the keys to that is code enforcement and property maintenance. Now, this may mean that I have to be more more careful around my property as well. And I accept that responsibility, and as I think everyone else that has property in this city should. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baca?
No report.
Commissioner Clark?
I just want to make a comment that, you know, six weeks ago, we had a discussion, and then four weeks ago, we had another comment from me about thinking about what we would like to do in the ordinance department for downtown development. And I'd like to get that back up on the plate. This is kind of something that was started by our previous mayor. And I think out of consideration and courtesy, we either ought to follow through with it and get the answer to it, and get it done, or determine that it's just not an issue that we want to address. And I really do think it's important. So, I'm just putting that back out onto the, and that to our program again.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Heschler?
No report?
Okay. The only report I have at this time is, I'm on board with Commissioner Clark
that we need to look at, maybe a town hall meeting as soon as we can, maybe in the next month or so, getting the public together downtown to look at our buildings, or look about living and operating businesses out of them, and how long you're going to be open, and display, and let people know. Because the public, when they come, and visitors, and, you know, we are a tourist attraction town. When people come, and tourists come, they like to go into buildings and look, whether it's old new, or whatever. So, again, we need to get on board with that, and get that happening as soon as possible. So, if Main Street would like to be involved, if they think they can, you know, organize a meeting and a get-together, fine. If not, let us know, so that we, as the commissioner and the manager, get together and put something, so that we can get this addressed as soon as possible. Again, too, I'd like to congratulate one more time our Miss Fiesta Court, Trinity Shipley, for being the 2019 Miss Fiesta, Mackenzie Luna, Miss Congeniality, and our first runner-up, and Haley Armijo, for being our second runner-up. I think that they will have an outstanding year. Please remember, there is a golf tournament this weekend, first in, what did he say, four years. If people would like to get out and at least watch and see what's going on, and visit our golf course, that would be wonderful. Also, another reminder that this Saturday, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, we will be having a spring cleanup day. So, everyone, this is your opportunity to clean your yards, your debris, your garages, your rooms, whatever, and bring them free of charge to the transfer station on South Broadway. Also, we have a new city Facebook page that has been started. So, I think Renee is, do you have it on the screen?
I'm going to pull it up, yeah.
She's going to pull it up on the screen. So, please visit our new Facebook page. It should have a lot of our announcements. If you'd like to be friends with us, you can accept friend request, or ask to be a friend, and we'll accept you. And that's all I have. Anything else?
We have an item for executive session.
One other item, just came in recently. There was a letter sent to us about the girls volleyball team from the high school. And it was very complimentary about this. And this, I guess, is their first year competing, and they're already in contention for, you know, for the top spots at the competitions they went to. But, this was from the mother of one of the girls, and the coach from one of the other teams. And it was just so, she exuberantly complimenting on the attitude of the girls, the strong sportsmanship, their willingness to step in and assist with the other, one of their competing teams, to give them a break, so they can go out and get lunch. And I think this very speaks very highly of the youth in our town. And, you know, I want to recognize that also.
Thank you. And I did talk to Clerk Canton and Manager Madrid about recognizing the youth of our community. We've had a lot of great achievements and outcomes of our community. And so, we're looking at putting these on our next agenda to recognize. We do have the SCAT Cats that came back as champions. We, again, for the fifth year in a row, I think it was.
Right.
We did have, our cheerleading squad was participating, and they did outstanding, you know, outstandingly well. And so, I would like to recognize everyone, all the youth of our community, for the great job that everyone did this past year, and to keep up the good work. So, that is on our next agenda in May. The next item on our agenda at this time is Item J, Executive Session. We have J1, Disposing, disposition of row property, various properties pursuant to 1015188. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I still believe.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call Rome?
Honorable Senator Wainwright?
Aye.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Honorable George Zagetti?
Aye.
We will now go into executive session as soon as our room clears.